Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Vales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And we have a guest with us tonight that I'd like to invite to come forward at Scout Troop 234, Dylan Schwab. Would you please come up? And I'm going to ask you to join Councilmember Curran over here. You can stay there, though. You don't have to come up here and lead us in a pledge. So, councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to just have a prayer for Officer Sierra Burton, who's from Richmond, Indiana, in our region here as we speak tonight while she is still at Miami Valley Hospital, struggling for her life. As some of you who have read the voucher, she was supposed to be married on this date, instead she continues to struggle for her life. So I'd ask for a moment of silence for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dylan, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes?
We'll be approved the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have some minutes from the July 25, 2022, regular meeting that need to be addressed. Any changes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from July 25 as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we have a pre-scheduled speaker this evening.
Bob. Officers.
Oh, I did get off the line, didn't I? You guys can have a seat, I'm sorry. No, we do need to back up. We have, the chief has a presentation that he would like to make this evening, and we do not need to keep these officers waiting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It is my pleasure to introduce to you, we may have actually Captain Sumner do the introductions, our four newest officers. If you fellows would turn towards council room, please. These are our four newest officers. I'm not going to tell you their ages, because they're young. So, they have been through a rigorous process to get hired here, and it's just exciting to see young folks still want to come into this career. As Mr. Curran just mentioned, it is dangerous. It is a noble career. We have such a wonderful community here to perform our duties and to serve and protect, such wonderful support. And I'm going to let Captain Sumner, he's the commander over our Special Services Division, go through each of their bios and introduce them to all of you folks. Captain Sumner.
Evening, Mayor, council. First, we'll introduce Officer Braden Dobney. Braden attended Clark State Community College, where he graduated in 2021 with an associate degree in criminal justice. Attended and graduated from the Green County Career Center's Criminal Justice Academy in June of 2022, and then joined us. So he is currently doing really well, learning a lot of hope. All right.
Good answer.
Good answer.
Officer William Garrett Coroli. Garrett is a graduate of Xenia High School in 2020, attended and graduated Hocking College with an associate's degree in criminal justice, along with graduating from Hocking College's School of Public Safety, receiving his OPADA Basic Police Officer Certification. And then we have Officer Joseph Desjardin. He graduated from Beaver Creek High School in 2011, attended and graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice in May of 2015. He moved to New Mexico, where he was enrolled in the New Mexico Junior, New Mexico Junior College, and completed their law enforcement academy in June of 2018. Out in New Mexico, he worked at Bottomless Lakes State Park in Roswell, New Mexico, as a park superintendent and ranger. Moved back to Ohio to be closer to family, and was hired as a police recruit for the city of Beaver Creek in April of 2022. He enrolled at Clark State Basic Peace Officer Training Academy and graduated August 10 of 2022. And last is Officer Curtis Kimmerly. He graduated from Stevens High School in 2017, enrolled and took classes at Clark State Community College, then enrolled in the Clark State Basic Peace Officer Academy, where he received his commission in January of 2021. He comes from the Kettering Health Network, where he worked as an officer primarily with, at the Grandview location. He started his employment with Kettering Health in April of 2021. All four of these officers have been assigned to the field training officer program. They have a field training officer, so they can learn our policies and procedures. They will be with their FTOs for approximately three months, and once they have successfully completed their field training phase, they will be assigned to solo patrol, which we will welcome.
Absolutely.
You guys want to say anything? No?
That's not the same as the... No. Fellas, we're certainly glad to have you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for this opportunity to allow us to seek out these fine recruits and these candidates. Looking forward to, I remember being in their shoes 30 years ago, and it was a little anxious, but great place to be, and I've told them that a few times, and we're proud to have them here, and we're glad to have them here. So, thank you for this time.
Welcome to Beaver Creek.
Thank you, fellas.
Now, is he here? Is Kevin Vaughn here now? Okay. All right, now I can get back to schedule here. So, Mr. Kevin Vaughn. I think he's going to do a presentation. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. It's good to be with you this evening to go over your 2021 audit results. We completed the audit back in June, and we're here to present it tonight.
All right.
I'll give you a second to get your copy of the single audit reports. I got one.
All right, we're all set.
Okay. All right, so if you turn in there to the table of contents, I'm going to go through a very summarized format of the audit this evening. The table of contents, the first two items on there are not included. That would be your annual comprehensive report. If you're familiar with that, that's a couple hundred pages long, and we could be here for several hours going through that. But it is referenced in here, and later I'll cover the results on that. Also included in this packet, which is called the single audit reports, is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards, the related notes, the what's called the Yellow Book Report, required by government auditing standards, the Uniform Guidance Report, which is the audit of the federal funds. And then the main thing we'll be going over tonight is the schedule of findings and question costs, which is a good overview of all the reports that we have to prepare for the federal government, for submission to the federal government. So if you turn in there to page, page one, we got your schedule of federal awards, and this past year you had approximately $4 million in federal expenditures of federal funds. And as you can see, the vast majority of that, as usual, is the highway planning and construction for a lot of the road projects that go on in Beaver Creek. If you turn then to pages two and three, this is the Yellow Book Report, and we'll recover, cover the results of these reports on the back. But I wanted to point out here, one thing to keep in mind, we have, the Yellow Book Report, we, if you look in the second paragraph, it basically says there, "We consider the city's internal control over financial reporting as a basis for designing audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control. Accordingly, we do not express an opinion." So I just wanted to make it clear, we're not doing an audit of the internal control system, but part of our audit does involve documenting, evaluating controls as it relates to the financial statements and financial reporting. So if you continue on pages four and five, this is the Uniform Guidance, which is the audit of the federal awards, and that continues on to page six. And then if we go back now to page seven, this is a good summary of the results of all these reports. The reports all have pretty standard language. A lot of, the only difference you would see from entity to entity would be the names and dates, and if you had any significant issues, those would be noted. So the schedule of findings and question costs, so this starts out at the top, the financial statements, and this again is the opinion that goes in the annual comprehensive report that is published. That's an unmodified opinion, which is basically considered a clean audit opinion in the accounting industry. The internal control report over financial reporting, that's what I mentioned earlier, is the Yellow Book Report, and it mentions there, material weaknesses identified, no. Significant deficiencies identified, none reported. And that report also deals with compliance with Ohio law, and we have no deficiency, or no non-compliance in our report. The audit of the federal funds, it follows the similar format of the Yellow Book. So for our audit of the federal awards, if you'll notice there, highway planning and construction was our major federal program. Were required, because you're a low-risk auditee, to get a 20% coverage of the federal funds. As you can tell, we got probably more than 80 or 90%, because those dollars make up such a significant amount for the city. So again, with that, the internal controls related to federal programs, material weaknesses identified, no. Significant deficiency identified, none reported. Auditors report on compliance, unmodified, which is a clean opinion, so there's no material non-compliance noted, and we did not report any findings on the highway planning grant. So down, down there at the bottom, it talks about financial statements required, findings related to the financial statements, there were none, and federal findings and question costs, none were noted in our audit. And then on page eight, it, the federal government requires that we address any major issues in your prior audit, and we just note there, for their purpose, that there were no prior findings or question costs. So that's kind of an overview of your 2021 audit. Does anybody have any questions on anything related to our audit?
Anyone? Questions? Well, that's always a nice report to receive, I think.
Yeah.
The way I interpret it. And of course, we have a wonderful staff here. You work with them, I'm sure, to get to this point, so we got to compliment Mr. Casera and his team. So, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to ordinancees, resolutions, and PUDs. First is Resolution 22-44.
Resolution number 22-44, a resolution directing the Green County auditor to enter the cost of overgrown grass cutting on the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I just wanted to let you know, before Randy does the presentation for the item, that I did change it this evening. We had one person that was on the list actually pay today, and I didn't feel like we should not accept her check and then send that over, and then the auditor would assess her additional fees. So it necessitated me just updating it and taking that one assessment off there. So I just wanted to let you know that. That's why you got a new version, and that's what happened. Without any further ado, Randy Burkett.
Thanks, Bill.
Maybe you can get a job.
I got a nice introduction there. As Bill, related to, this is the resolution where we are having the auditor actually send the assessments to the residents who are in violation of this ordinances that are related to this. So just a real quick overview, as council is aware, we have a weed and grass ordinance in our charter, or in our code ordinances, as well as the noxious weeds section, and what those state is, you can't have grass that's over 10 inches, and you can't have, you know, noxious weeds growing up around the property. And the code enforcement department is in charge of going out and enforcing that ordinance. So how that violation process begins, we get the complaint from either an anonymous person or a neighbor, or on very egregious cases, our proactive code enforcement program will see something and go out and, and measure the grass and start that process. And what we look for is grass or weeds that are over 10 inches, and if we do find that, we put a placard in somebody's yard, in their yard, or in the lot, and give them five to seven days, depending on the day of the week. Sometimes it's five if it's a Monday, but then usually we'll try to give them the weekend. So it tends to be a little longer, seven days, and offer them the opportunity to get in compliance. And we'll go out after the end of that period, and if they haven't brought the lawn or weeds into control, we have a contractor that we use, hire them to go out and take care of the property for us. And what we do is, once we get the bill from the contractor, we forward that on to the property owner with a administrative fee for their opportunity to pay the bill right away. If that comes back after 30 days, or if they don't pay it after 30 days, we'll send a second notice out with an additional administrative fee. And if we, again, don't receive them, then we get to this point here, whereas we've got this list of unpaid invoices, and in order for us to get that, recoup that money, we need to have the auditor actually assess it on their property taxes, so that the auditor then in the, in the spring and the fall can send us the proceeds from that assessment. Just a quick overview, you can see our number of grass notice violations have increased over time, down from, in the 200s in 2019, in 2019 and 2020 era, to 413 last year. We're up quite a bit this year. As of the end of July, we were up to 404. But that's not, that doesn't denote that we'll have 800 this year. It drops off quite significantly after the end of September. So I would guess we'd probably get around 500, 500 to 550 by the end of this year. And that, that kind of goes back to how we've increased the proactive code enforcement efforts that we see, and try to get those taken care of beforehand. But you can see that our correction rate by the, by the property owner has quite, increased quite a bit, from about 2/3 in 2019 to almost 90% correction rate by the property owner now. The cost to mow has increased quite a bit this year, just based on, there's been a significant increase in their fuel surcharge that we've seen. So that's something that the contractors pass to us. That's not something we're just throwing on there. That's, that's a contractor. Their, their costs have just gone up by a lot. And another thing that we do monitor is our vacant property registry, and that's a flat fee. Those are typically, from the homes that have been foreclosed and they're sitting vacant, we require the mortgage company or the bank to register those vacant properties with us, and there's a $150 flat fee for the year. And we've seen that actually drop a lot since 2019. It's down to about 1/3 of what it was in 2019. So that's a good sign that there are fewer and fewer vacant properties within the city. So just give an overview, in your packet, it's a slightly different number, as Bill explained earlier, and on this presentation, it shows the old numbers. The new numbers, we have 27 parcels, so that reflects the one that was paid today. So there can be 42 assessments, and the total assessment that we're proposing, or that we have on the, on the books is 8,662, so it's $200 less than what this number shows here. And again, that's to pay the contractor and to recover the administrative costs that we have racked up over the last year. And I put it on every slide, I didn't mention it on every, every slide, but, you know, compliance with the grass and weed regulations is our goal. It's not to jam anybody up, it's not to be in the grass and weed regulation business. We just want to get, we're not in the grass cutting business. We just want to, regulation is our ultimate, or the compliance is our ultimate goal. So staff does recommend approval of the resolution you have before you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? All right, what I need is a, is a motion to amend ordinance 22-44 by reducing the number of parcels by one and reducing the assessed value as in the example that we have here and were just presented. So if I can get a motion to do that, we'll, I think we can move forward.
Mayor, I move to amend Resolution 22-44 to reflect that the number of parcels should in fact be 43, and the assessment value should be $8,662.50.
Second. All right. May I ask you to take out the parcel number, we're, only because we...
Well, this is just a summary. Again, that's not part of, I don't think that's part of here, what you're passing. That's just a summary.
The parcels up here, numbers here, don't matter.
Right. 43 is the correct amount of parcel numbers. That has not been updated yet. Those were the original.
43 assessments.
43 assessments.
43 assessments.
Not parcels.
Sorry, my apologies.
Some of the parcels have multiple assessments.
27 parcels, 43 assessments.
Right, yeah. Sorry about the confusion. There's 27 different properties, but some of them have multiple assessments. Just ignore the parcels there, that's assessments.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to amend Resolution 22-44 by reducing the assessment number and, and reducing the assessed value number. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution 22-44.
Second.
As amended.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 22-44 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 22-40.
Resolution 22-40, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interest owned by Kyle and Katie Ann Plant, with interest by others for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight, there's going to be four different pieces, or four different owners that there's going to be pieces of legislation for. This is the first one. There is a resolution and an ordinance, a company, an accompanying ordinance to go with it, so there's two pieces of legislation for each of these appropriations. This first one is at the corner of Highgate and Grange Hall, right there. That is a temporary right of way that we need for that property. Unfortunately, we have been unable to get ahold of these people to try to get this property take acquired, so we need to move forward with appropriation for this to keep the project moving. And as with any of these, we will attempt to do that all the, all the way through until we have to move forward, even while we go through this process, so. So that's the first one. With that, we would ask that the council approve a resolution for the project, or for this, for this parcel to move forward to appropriate, it's parcel three for this one.
Questions? Motion to approve Resolution 22-40?
Move to approve Resolution 22-40.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-40. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the accompanying ordinance, need to read that, please. 22-20.
Ordinance number 22-20 to appropriate certain real property interest owned by Kyle and Katie Ann Plant for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
And really nothing to add to it.
Nothing to add to it, Mr. Mayor.
The formality.
Yep, this is the formality. This is the second piece of legislation for that parcel.
This is an ordinance, so if there's anyone here tonight that would, has public input that they would like to address on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to move ordinance 22-20 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 22-20 to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 22-41, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interest owned by Dan Warner, with interest by others for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This, this, or, this resolution is for multiple parcels owned by Mr. Warner. The first one being this large parcel along the west side here. There's actually three different areas, so you have the farmhouse, the large field, and there's also a little sliver right there, the bottom of the field, that is a separate, called out as a separate parcel in there. He also owns, his house is also across the street right there. So with that, parcel 17 is the farmhouse, parcel 24 is his, or I'm sorry, parcel 17 is the farm, field, house, in the house. Parcel 24 is the house that he lives in, the residential house. So with that, these, the farm field we have, there's multiple pages here, but I'll just kind of go through this quickly. The farm field, we have temporary takes and permanent takes. The temporary here is in pink, and it's kind of along the backside. The permanent is up closer to the road there. If you see, this kind of continues, it goes out for the storm that we have going across the road right there. Then it comes back in towards the road. That is needed for the, the re, the redoing of the profile for Grange Hall. We're going to be adjusting the profile with this roadway. As you can see on this page, this is the, this has, continues parcel 17, but parcel 24 right here, this is Mr. Warner's property that he owns. There is a storm sewer easement that we will be needing for some swale work and drainage structures to be placed in his yard, and then the temporary foregrating again. And then this goes up along the west side, through his, up to his farmhouse, and little pasture land right there on Kemp. So that is the, we have with Mr. Warner. Once again, we would ask the City Council to recommend approval of the resolution for this project and the accompanying ordinance.
So just a quick question, does this one resolution cover both pieces of property?
It does, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have you gotten ahold of them?
We have been in touch with Mr. Warner on multiple occasions, Mr. Vales. We have attempted to work through his issues that he's had. Part of it was money, part of it is the grass mowing that we spoke about in the work session last week. Unfortunately, that seems to be a sticking point with Mr. Warner. So we're going to continue to try to work and see if we can come to a resolution. I hope that we can, but if we can't, this is to move forward.
I hear a motion.
I want to approve Resolution 22-41, Your Honor.
Do I have?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-41. What pulls some teeth there? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. And so now follows the accompanying ordinance, which is 22-21.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one to appropriate certain real property interest owned by Dan Warner for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. All right, this is the accompanying ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to move ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one to the second reading, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-one onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now Resolution 22-42.
Resolution number twenty-two dash forty-two, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels of real estate and other property interest owned by Michael and Gloria Barrett with interest by others for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is the third property owner for the Grange Hall Widening that we are moving forward with appropriation. It's this parcel right here on the west side, or on, excuse me, on the east side. This is two houses down from Mr. Warner. Mr. and Mrs. Barrett, I've been in contact with them multiple times since last August. We've tried to change some things as we could with the layouts for the storm and other parts of the project to see if we could come to a conclusion. The storm, we were able to move for them, but we have not been able to agree upon price for the land acquisition yet. I'm continuing to work with them, I spoke with them again today to try to move forward to see if we can come to a resolution. They have, with that, with their property, they have a small little piece of permanent right-of-way, which is right there around that storm structure. Then there is a storm sewer easement and temporary easement for grading. So that's what we're looking at with them. Yeah, well, like I said, we'll continue to work with them to try to come to a resolution, but this is to move forward. Once again, I would ask council to approve a resolution to proceed with this appropriation.
Thank you. Any comment?
How, how different is the grading on this proposed plan compared to what it is now?
So in that area, Mr. Bales, it, there is a, is it lowering right there, Jeff, in front of the Barrett's? That's where it's going up. Okay, so that area, the profile's going up, so that's why we have the grading going back further in that area.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 22-42.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. All right, we have the accompanying ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two to appropriate certain real property interest owned by Michael and Gloria Barrett for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. This again is the accompanying ordinance to the resolution, so nothing else we need there. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
I want to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two to the second reading, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two onto the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we could do this all night, but this is the last one coming up.
This is the last one, yep.
And next is Resolution 22-43.
Resolution number twenty-two dash forty-three, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels of real estate and other property interest owned by Roy Egan Jr. with interest by others for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
All right, thank you again. This parcel here's, once again, is on the east side, across from the farm field. Well, you'll see with this parcel, I think this one was only temporary that we, yeah, we only needed temporary from this property owner for the grading work. All the other work with drainage is going to be within the existing right-of-way on this property. Unfortunately, this property owner, we have been unable to get ahold of since the, the acquisition began for the project, so we need to move forward since we have not been able to get ahold of them. Hopefully, they'll return our calls at some point, but have not been able to yet, so. With that, we would like to move forward with the resolution for the appropriation of this parcel.
And I would like to turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor for this resolution and following ordinance. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion on this one?
We do have one question, just for clarification. When we have a temporary easement, or we're taking temporary control, our obligation is to return the property back to its original condition.
That is correct, yeah. At the, the temporary easement will allow us to get on that property to do the work, and that we are required to put that back at, at more better conditions than what we left it at, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 22-43.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving Resolution 22-43?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, yeah.
All right, motion carries. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three to appropriate certain real property interest owned by Roy Egan Jr. for the Grange Hall Road Widening Project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Okay, and similar to the others, same?
Same thing, yes, as the accompanying ordinance for Resolution 22-43.
Okay, any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
You have a public-
Public.
Oh, that's right, anybody here from the public on this property? All right, seeing none. Any other further comment from council?
I want to approve ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three to the second reading, Your Honor.
A second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move twenty-two dash twenty-three to a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Decision item, and I guess is the vision statement that we've been discussing. Are you going to handle that? Is there any further discussion you want on it?
Mayor, as yourself and council are aware, on the council management strategy session that was held on July twenty-sixth, which is basically our annual retreat that we had, little different this year, we had, we're focused on priorities, of course, as usual, but had a little activity that we did, a team building, so to speak, and priorities that were set, and visioning was done with the help of a facilitator. This vision statement, as you see here, the city of Beaver Creek is a safe, vibrant community dedicated to serving the needs of residents and embracing the opportunities of tomorrow. And at that point in time, it was agreed upon that everybody liked that vision statement to move forward, and so here tonight is just a decision item for you guys to make any changes, or as is, to accept that as council's vision statement for the city.
Okay. So, again, this was discussed at the work session that we had the other night as well, or was on the table to discuss. Didn't take much, but the, so do I have a consensus, or do I have a motion to, to run with this vision statement?
Do I approve the vision statement, Your Honor?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the vision statement that we came up with at the retreat. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council time. Well, let's see, who never really gets to go first? Councilmember Schwartz, would you like to go first?
Certainly. So, earlier, I guess last week, we, I was able to attend Beaver Creek's opening day, so Beaver Creek City Schools. It's such a tremendous ceremony, they have all of the teachers there, and just kind of helping them get a kickstart to the school year. And so that was a great opportunity, always a fun time, and always great to get a little sneak peek of the band show. In addition, last Thursday, I was, attended the Chamberlain's event that was at Beaver Creek, or was hosted by Beaver Creek Wetlands, and it was at Pearls Fen, which is one of my favorite parks within the wetlands. And so if you have not had an opportunity to go out there and explore, I highly, highly recommend it, especially now. The flowers are still blooming, and it's still very beautiful, and there's a nice connector that takes you over to Oaks Quarry if you're looking for an extra extension onto your hike, and so just highly encourage you to go out and see that. This past Friday, I also attended the Beaver Creek High School football game, and it was wonderful, the stadium was packed, it was such a great game, and I'm very hopeful for our future with the new coach, and looking forward to an exciting season. I wanted to take a moment just to welcome the new officers. As Chief said, this is a very difficult time in a profession that many people are not willing to step into, and so it's great to see so many young gentlemen that are willing and able, and great, greatly appreciated that they're here in our community. And so I just want to thank them and wish them well with their field training officers, and hopefully they will have a successful completion, and we'll have some more officers out on the street sooner before later. Last, certainly not least, I just want to compliment our staff. I know that I feel like I do this pretty regularly, but we really do have a tremendous staff here. As we talked about with the audit, Mr. Casera and his team do a fabulous job with our financials. This morning, I think all of us woke up, or at least last night, had an email from a concerned resident, and we worked with the chief and Captain Monar, and we were able to get an answer by the end of the day today. And then Randy has been helping me with another project, and everyone is just so responsive. We are always getting compliments, and so I just can't say enough. So thank you to staff. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to also attend the kickoff for the school year. It was exciting always to hear that fantastic band. They're just out of sight. Really enjoyed that. Also went to the Wetlands function where Councilmember Schwartz just mentioned, and that was fantastic, Fairborn, and they got a great vision for what they want to do to connect up the whole system and make it really an exciting spot for our community to be able to visit, and really appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales.
Well, all right, again, welcome to the new officers. It's nice to see four new officers starting, and hopefully we'll continue that trend. I was happy to have participated in their swearing-in ceremony, and it was nice to see them tonight. Happy to report as an outcome from the last work session we had, that starting next year, we'll see some more food and beverage selections at the Beaver Creek Golf Club. I've already spoken to a large contingent out there that's happy to hear that news, so look forward to that. I will be attending the John Maxwell Transformation Table that the Chamber of Commerce is hosting on September twelfth, I think with maybe one or two of my colleagues here, so I look forward to that. I've really been happy that, to see the number of new restaurants opening in Beaver Creek. It gives us a lot of good selection, and it, just in the last couple of weeks, my family and I have, have eaten at Rooster's twice. And, all right, no judgment, it's been awesome. The food has been good, and the service has been very fast, even though the place has been packed with people. So it was nice to see that they, they were staffed, and, and that place is really nice, so I just thought I'd mention it. And then like Councilwoman Schwartz said, unfortunately, last night, we learned of an unfortunate dog attack in the city. Obviously, that's awful to hear, but I do appreciate the city manager and police chief working with the Green County Animal Control to kind of get to the bottom of that and explore our ordinances and, and work with the county to try and mitigate those issues in the, in the future, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what Councilmembers Schwartz and Bales noted last time, and to thank the residents of Beaver Creek for really slowing down around the buses with, around back-to-school. It's important to keep our kids safe, and a lot of people really try to, try to do that very well. And I'd also like to thank the teachers, because with three kids in school, they put in a lot of work, they often pay for resources themselves, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of community involvement in terms of supplying classrooms and things of that nature, and I'd like to pass out a blanket thank you to so many organizations that do that. Had the opportunity, for the first time this year, to play Beaver Creek Golf Course. I'd like to thank the staff, because it really is in fantastic condition, and I'd like to apologize to Katie and Nick for photobombing their drone flyovers. We happen to coordinate in that way, so there's certainly some pictures of me hitting some bad shots, so maybe, but alas. The technology is wonderful on those golf carts, it really is an amazing upgrade, and it encourages residents and non-residents alike to take a trip to the golf course. Finally, there's a fair bit of nostalgia in our house, because Royal Point Park is under construction, and so I'd like to thank staff for all of their work there, but know that there's a neighborhood full of kids excited for the next park. So, I'd like to thank the city for all the hard work there, especially on the weekend, a lot of city workers were, were out then, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Councilman Kern for bringing up the Richmond officer, as she struggles, and also like to remember the Clear Creek officer who was shot a few weeks ago, who apparently is having a setback and having some more problems, so we want to continue to keep them in our prayers. I was able to attend the All-American Evening at the Arcade downtown about a week ago. It's a fundraiser for Fisher houses across the country. It was a great venue for the activity, and they raised a lot of money for that, and our own Wendy Rogers from the chamber was the speaker. She's had a lot of interaction with the Fisher houses with her son's accident, so. I was able to attend along with Mayor Stone and Councilman Kern, HOA meeting at Stone Falls. It was good interaction with the community there, and I would really like to see us do more of that, and I really want to thank Vice Mayor Garcia for coming up with this program a couple of years ago. It's, I think it's a great way to interact with our community. I too was able to be a part of the swearing-in of the four new officers. I'm really glad that they're here. I'd like to see four, maybe eight more, but we'll get those as we go. And I did attend the Beaver Creek Schools opening day. It was a great program. The speaker was, was long, but he was really good. He did a great job with that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. I don't have much, I think most of my fellow councilmembers have covered everything, but just again, welcome to our four new officers. I agree, it's great to have them here. I hope they learn a lot in these three months, but I echo Captain Monar, I welcome their opportunity to be on their own, so definitely could use the extra help. That's about it for me.
Absolutely. Well, thank you. All right, and I can pretty much say ditto to just about everything, and it's been a very enjoyable couple of weeks. I mean, a lot of things going on, but I want to thank, I want to thank staff, as you mentioned, we went to the HOA meeting, and one of their suggestions was to put cross-traffic does not stop, at the stop signs there coming out from Chick-fil-A and Aldi's. And by there today, they're up. So thank you. I mean, that was a quick turnaround. Don't look at me funny, because I'm, they gotta be up, right? I'm sure I saw them. But that was, the, the people that live back in there will be very pleased that we acted in that manner. We, the Xenia Beaver Creek Football Game is the crosstown rival, and there's a trophy that goes with that, and we've not had it for a little while, but, you know, last Friday, I was on the field with Xenia Mayor Sarah Mays, and she would not even let me hold it to present to her. She decided she was just going to hang on to it. So anyway, it's always fun. In addition, there's an exhibit out at the Air Force Museum right now, that's the Marine Corps Art Exhibit, and the Marine Corps artists have, they have maybe three dozen very wonderful paintings and sculptures and that sort of thing out there. And some of the artists do hang around, I mean, from time to time, if you're lucky enough to catch one. But it is in Hangar Three, and it's worth the long walk back to Hangar Three, and I really enjoyed it, so it, you may want to check that out. And many of you know, the Vietnam Memorial Wall was around for four or five days. And many of you know, the Vietnam Memorial Wall was around for four or five days, also at the Air Force Museum. And Friday, we had a flyover of two B-52s, which B-52s in the Vietnam War kind of go hand in hand. I mean, they're just one of those things. But all was done, and everything came out really nice, and that traveling wall is very impressive. Even though it's not the real thing, it's still quite impressive. So with that, I think I'll quit rambling, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few announcements tonight. The 2022 resurfacing and curb program, the part two, we always say this is the alternative. Once we are done with the primary roads, we tally up how much funding has been expended. Everything is always matters on how far deep, the deeper you go, the more it costs. So this year, we are able to stretch the dollars further by completing in part two three more miles. So that will bring our miles completed this year to a little over 10 miles. I will say that is outstanding considering the cost of, our cost compared to 2021 was increased by 25% in our bid amount. So the fact that we were able, we were originally expecting to only be able to do around six miles, so we have stretched it to 10 miles. And again, some of that is due to clearly being, not having to go as deep in the asphalt, not being able to, not having to spread as thick of the asphalt because of the condition. So these are the list of roads that we'll be doing as part two, that is being done the following week, weather permitting, of course, and this information can be, of course, found on our website under, or if you have questions, the Engineering Division's 427-5513. So that's a bit of good news. City offices will be closed on, I know this is the last meeting, and this is still a week or so away, but, more than a week away, but Monday, September 5th, in observance of the Labor Day. And non-emergencies, always feel free to call, non-emergencies 426-1225. That's the police department non-emergency contact. The Senior Center is having a garage sale Friday, September 9th, so that's coming up again next month, but it's before we have our next meeting. So Laffino Center, there's a parking lot that we call the Overflow Parking Lot behind the Senior Center, directly behind off of Southview Street. That's where it's going to be set up, so be transformed into an outdoor garage sales. Items will range from home to crafts, handcrafted. So come out and enjoy shopping with the Senior Center. Popcorn Festival, this is again going to be happening here real shortly, weekend after Labor Day, Saturday and Sunday, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Saturday and 11:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. on Sunday. A lot of entertainment, arts, craft shows, car show, 5K run, and more. This is not a city event at all. This is sponsored by the Beaver Creek Popcorn Committee. They have a website, beavercreekpopcornfestival.org. If you have any further questions, we can pass you on to them, but this is their festival. But it's always a good time, come out, hopefully we're, hope for good weather during this event. And I just wanted to mention for one second, though, on our beavercreekohio.gov website, we have a levy information page about the street levy and the police levy that are on the November ballot, so please check out our homepage and look for levy information and get the latest information about the two levies on the November ballot. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. So is there anyone here this evening that would like to address counsel on any issue at all? I don't see anybody willing to get up, but I do want to say thank you to the scout member back here, Dylan. Thank you for paying attention. You stayed wide awake. I don't know how you did it, but it's always a pleasure. Come back and see us. You got anything you want to add? You want to say anything? No? I don't blame you. All right. Next item is executive session. May we have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the purchase of property for public purposes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Garcia. Yes. Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz. Yes. Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. There will be no decision or action taken by council after the executive session. We will come back here to adjourn, so you can either go home and enjoy your evening, or you can stay here and wait for us to come back. We are in executive session. Thank you.